Sorry Amanda, I did that to you again. We're going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen meeting, special meeting for Budget Workshop. Deated February 7th. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Alright, thank you very much. Before we get started, I want to welcome Eric Anderson to this meeting. I'm very happy to see you Eric. Thank you for participating.
No problem, happy to be here.
Members of the public, we are going to be short two members, so we're probably going to get limited work done, but we're going to hear from Eric and Sherry and do a couple other issues. So we're going to move to public speak. And we're going to start with Marcy Minor.
Hi, good to see you guys. I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Okay, Diancho Cat.
I'm all set, thanks.
And then we have two phone numbers down here. Eight six oh four seven eight five six three one.
That would be me, Jim Halas. I'm just here in case there's any questions relative to an item on the agenda.
Alright, thank you very much. And then four seven eight five six three one. Sounds, looks like the same number. You're on twice Jim. Okay.
I dialed in twice.
That's alright. Hey, public speech just goes faster this way. Alright, we're going to move on to item three. It's on the agenda, the grant of covenant, covenants and easements for the LaCesta Acres. I know that Scott had put this on hold at one of our meetings. I know that this needs to be signed. My question to Scott to begin with is the planning and zoning and all of the necessary commissions approved this?
Right, we got that, a letter today from Jim and Jed approving the easement covenant for you to sign.
Okay, and the pins that you were concerned about have been put into the ground, documented correctly?
Right, they still have to get a red, the tags from the town, the metal tags to be put in the trees, but the pins and the stakes are in there now.
Okay, alright, so this is a we have to follow through on this and I have to get this signed by the 10th. Okay. I'm assuming someone wants to make a motion that we approve this, or do we have to approve it, or? Eric, do we have to approve this from the Board of Selectmen standpoint?
So I think technically, all that has to happen is you as the first selectman have to sign. The board as a whole, I don't believe has to actually act. I brought it to the board a couple months ago because I thought that was something that the board would want to be aware of, rather than just have you sign.
Okay, Jeff Murray, do you have a problem with signing that easement covenant?
With you signing it?
Yes.
No, no.
You got it. I will, I will get that done. I'll try to do it tomorrow. We'll get that done. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Jim.
Thanks Jim.
Thanks Jim.
Take care.
We're going to move on to item four, which is our proposed budget. Eric, since you have been unable to join us in the last couple meetings, why don't we hear from you a little bit about what your priorities are and what we need to do for you?
Uh, so, at the, let's see, the last meeting that I attended, you had asked me to put together a document that just said what would be all the personnel changes to really maximize the use of the town hall and town services. So I gave you that. You know, and then I guess if I were to, to list them in order of priority for me, I would say probably, you know, the, we ought to strongly consider adding a part-time seasonal, seasonal employee for Public Works. So I think that's a fairly fairly low-cost, high-return item. You know, and it's, it's a lot less expensive than hiring a full-time employee. Now, I would prefer to have a full-time employee, but I just recognize that that's an expensive proposition. Second thing, I think we should promote Richard Bagan to maintainer two as part of the next budget. Although he's only been a full-time employee for about a year, he was a part-time employee for six years or five years before that. And he certainly has the skillset for what you would expect for a maintainer two. So I, I think that would be a priority. And frankly, you know, the two other priorities that I would have would be, one, I would make Amanda full-time. Because I think that the town's emphasis on doing a really good job of communicating with the public is wonderful. And I, I wholeheartedly support it, but that chews up a pretty large fraction of my admin assistance time. And I think we, given that the amount of time I have to work on things is often the limiting factor in what we get done. I think it would be money well-spent to bring Amanda on full-time. And then the third thing is I think we should consider a town planner as a part-time position. So those would really be, those would be the three bigger ones. The other things I think we're going to need to do, which we've kind of addressed a little bit in this budget, is we're going to need to keep increasing the funding for senior transportation. If you look in a, over a two-and-a-half-year period, the number of medical calls that senior transportation responds to has basically increased by a factor of four. So we're, we're doing the same number of like trips and fun stuff, but we're just doing an enormous not, number of more medical transports. And I think that's something that's, you know, it's definitely necessary. And so I think we're going to need to increase the cost basis for that. And I also think that, you know, Kathy Pelosi has volunteered an enormous amount of time for the town. But she is starting to step back a little bit, and she's starting to transfer a lot of those extra responsibilities for Roberta. And I think her Roberta stipend should go up a little bit, because I think her workload is, is definitely increasing dealing with that. I don't think we can put senior transportation on her plate, because I think that's a that's a giant time commitment in and of itself. And if Kathy ever steps back from that, we're going to need to, you know, we're going to need to address that with a, you know, with the standalone hire. So that's really what, what I have in terms of priorities, which I think we should do going forward. And as I all, also said before, you know, in talking with Bolton, I think we need to increase the hours for the building official from five to seven, which is also a fairly, you know, it's a not insignificant cost increase, but I think that's a better estimate of how much work he's actually doing for the town right now.
Okay, Sherry, just as a secondary thing, at our last meeting, I do believe we requested that you put the seasonal employee in the spreadsheet. And I believe we requested to put the planner in the budget spreadsheet. We had talked about senior transportation. We haven't discussed Amanda's situation and the building official, I believe, is new, or did that get put in Eric before you left?
That was in the budget, so I baked that into the budget right from the beginning. So the budget document you have has the increased costs for the building official.
Okay. Those are all things that we will sit there and deal with. I know, you know, we had some questions. We were considering canceling this meeting because of the other members that are unable to attend tonight. Is there anything that Scott, you would like to tackle in their absence?
Did we add, we added the senior seasonal employee, we added, did we add promotion of the Richard Bagan to the budget?
Yes. Yeah.
So we have to talk about Amanda full-time. And what did we do with the part-time planner?
We put that planner in.
We put the planner in.
We put it in, right?
I mean, we haven't voted on any of these issues other than, you know, other than some of the compensation issues, I believe. I don't recall voting on anything other than that. We talked about putting the seasonal employee in Public Works, increasing Public Works. I actually think Eric, we, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we put in another employee for Public Works.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, not only seasonal employee, we put in another employee, just to, just to sit there and see how it works out. So
Sure.
You know, obviously those dollars are going to be, it's going to have to be offset by other things, whether we have, you know, less debt, more revenue, whatever we need to do.
But I, Jeff, I think that anything that we, we had Sherry put into the budget, we voted on. We said that we'd like to add those to the budget.
We'll have to check that one. I'm not sure about that Scott. I think we, especially on the end of the seasonal employee, well, we'll have to look back at the records. I mean, I can't remember. The budget official, I know we didn't talk about, I know we haven't talked about Amanda yet. You know, we definitely haven't talked about senior transport, so we're going to
No, we didn't talk about them.
So yeah, I do have a couple, I have a couple small things for Public Works that we probably need to increase. I did do a tour with Jay, electrical work. And we looked at the, the oil storage area. And I think Scott's had these concerns too, that we have fifty-five gallon drums sitting on the ground right next to or nearby a storm drain. And we need to put some containment underneath those in case we ever have a barrel echo. So we do not have any oil or leakage into the nearby water course. So there's about, Jay estimates about a thousand dollars for that. And the electrical that we originally quoted at five thousand, because of supplies and other issues is up to sixty-four hundred. So we probably need to amend those amounts. And add in the containment, because I think an ounce of prevention for a thousand dollars is worth found a cure in this, in this instance.
There's, there's open manholes and you know that they, in the building, and you know that they must probably go to the river.
They definitely go to the river, no doubt.
Alright, so let's sit there and look at that. Sherry, just because I need to understand this, the updated spreadsheet gets transmitted and dispersed how often?
Hmm, I, the last transmittal I gave you was Thursday, and I haven't touched it since. It's the same. I didn't make any changes whatsoever.
Okay, alright. We don't have any scheduled departments come on. So last week, Eric, just for your knowledge, we had Jay come on. Sure. And one thing with Jay, just so everybody's aware, and, and I'd like to understand how this has to be dealt with. Jay texted me after the meeting and he informed me that we also need to have the funding related to the grant that is supposed to happen on Shoddy Mill. So Eric, if I understood that right, what his request was, but what I would ask you is, do we have that already in our, in last year's numbers? And did that get moved somewhere? Did that just go back to our general fund?
So, we haven't, we're not, we won't get the money for the steep grant until we're a lot farther along and we have an actual contractor picked out. We've gone through the RFP process. So that basically hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar match is, is not there yet. Is that your question?
Yes, so the hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in our, our portion was not in last year's budget?
It was in last year's budget. Remember, what we, what we do basically is that we, because it's, it's a permanent fund now, we have both Town Aid Road and the Road Improvement Fund. Last year, we did ballpark numbers around five hundred thousand dollars in roadwork. But we started with some extra money, so we front-loaded and did a lot of that work before July 1. And then we spent about three hundred something thousand dollars of that money after July 1. So we actually have a couple hundred thousand dollars of that money left over that we have not yet spent, that we will spend between now and July 1, doing early work before we have next year's budget. So that's basically how we're doing it. We, we have to hold enough money back out of one year's budget for that spring roadwork.
Understood, but by, my, my, what Jay asked me and my question to you is, the hundred and thirty thousand, which is our portion of the grant money to complete Shoddy Mill and Long Hill.
Right.
We have that available, or do we need to budget for that in addition issue?
We, I never had any intention of budgeting that as an additional line item for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That was always coming out of the roadwork budget. Jay doesn't like that, because that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars less chip seal and other stuff he can do. But, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're going to get the town to just agree to add an extra a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the roadwork budget. I would like to increase the roadwork budget, and I would like to get in the habit of increasing that a little every year, so that, you know, at some point it comes up to a high enough value that we can start doing some actual paving and other things, other than just, you know, shim and chip seal. If that makes sense.
That makes sense, that, that, that budget then, we're going to have to take a quick, quick re-look at it, because I know what Jay was talking about. I believe Jay said somewhere around eight miles, if everybody remembers that number correctly, which is what he was thinking about doing for chip sealing and I believe it was forty-eight thousand dollars a mile. So if that's the case, then he's going to basically only get about five miles to him.
Yeah, I think that's probably realistic.
Alright, and we should look at that in total, because he was sitting there saying to me that it needed to be added, but what you're saying Eric is that that one thirty needs to come out of what we, we appropriate for this coming year. Plus what you have remaining. So if you have two hundred thousand, please sit there and go for this.
Correct, correct. And he knows that, he just doesn't like it. But, I mean, he would spend more in every category, you know, but I'm the same way. I will spend as much as you give me. You know, I certainly get it, and you know, I do realize that we're asking him to work with a fairly lean budget, and it's got some restrictions.
Okay, alright. Jeff, do you have any other issues other than the electrical and water, oil storage, anything that you want to go over with our friends, Mr. Mandeville and Ms. King?
No, I think that that was just something I wanted to capture, and it was the discussion I had with Jay. I went down and toured the Public Works on Friday. And just got a good overview of the electrical work that needs to be done, and I agree, it needs to be taken care of. So we should, we should put it in this budget.
I think actually, I, so first of all, I mean, the whole reason we went to a general building maintenance fund was to, so we had a pool of money, and as we established priorities for what we needed to do most, we could just fund them directly out of the main fund. And I think that philosophy still holds. And I think as long as you properly fund the building maintenance fund, you don't necessarily have to at this stage pick out all these little projects. You know, you just have to have a big enough pool overall that you can accomplish that. And I actually think we're going to be okay with doing the electrical work at Public Works this spring out of this budget, which, what, with what remains in the, the building maintenance fund.
You're going to try to get that done this spring on our, on our current year budget?
Yeah, it looks like that. I mean, I, I'm looking at how much is left in that budget. You know, and the things that we have outlined so far. And it looks like there's enough to accomplish that. So I don't see that as something that needs to be budgeted for separately. That's just my
Eric, have we earmarked that electrical work at the town hall and then the, the tank, the tank piping as well?
I'm accounting for that with that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, we still have, you know, the limiting factor right now has been getting contractors, you know, to give me hard numbers to be able to put together proposals to do all the work, not, you know, the funding right now. So, yeah, we could, we could get that electrical work done.
Yeah, I think we should, we should.
Yeah, I, I do agree. I mean, I don't think it's the biggest priority we have, but I think it is a priority, yes. But remember too, that in the last two years, I mean, there has been an enormous amount of electrical work done at the town garage. I mean, that place has had a complete relamping. Most of the old wiring was stripped out. I mean, we've spent, actually, no, I take that back. We haven't actually spent much money. Lenco donated an enormous amount to rewiring of that building. So, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that when I looked at it two years ago, I thought it was an unmitigated disaster. Now I think it just has some problems here and there. That's the difference in my mind. So yes, we need to do it, but no, it's not, it's not the crisis it was a couple of years ago.
I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned about the power, the, the AC lines, they're, they're very low. They're down to about a hundred and eight volts. So we really need to tackle that, and just for the equipment, and it's because a garage door opener to go up and down for the, you know, to get the trucks in and out is on that circuit. So like I said, if we ever have a failure, I, I just think we just, especially this time of year, if we can get in there, let's just do it, you know, in the winter, he wants to get inside and stay warm. The perfect opportunity for him to get that work done.
So Eric, just so we allow you to drag a little bit. There's a new roof put on that building?
There is.
What else, what else got accomplished at that building? So we're all aware?
We did a bunch of work to the slab, to get the slab taken care of. There's a new, like kitchenette area that was, one of the old storage rooms was cleared out and made into something, you know, kind of presentable and usable, so they can at least store soups and stuff while they're there. The whole main office area has been painted and looks good. We've gotten rid of an enormous amount of junk, and we've done a total relighting package of the garage. And we've stripped out a lot of the old non-functional wire and rewired quite a bit of the garage at this point. So it's had an awful lot cosmetically and functionally done to it. So, you know, it's not perfect. I mean, let's face it, it's a hundred and fifty-year-old building. Yeah, you know, but, but I think it's, it's
So the
Good building.
The town will at least get another fifty, sixty years out of it?
Yeah, a couple hundred more.
Plus you did the backdoor Eric.
Yep.
And Public Works is actually repairing some of the structural light beams in there. I, I, I heard that Zach Zito was actually, I saw some of his welding handiwork. It was very well done. So that's saving us a little bit of money there that they're taking on that work as well, so. They've done a lot in the last couple of years. It's a, it's a remarkable difference from when I was in there last.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, both in the cleanliness, the organization, and then also the functionality, the building has improved a lot. So that's been great.
And they're talking about getting some home reels, I guess they bought some hose reels and some electric reels, and they want to be able to just make it more user-friendly to work in, and I, and I support that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I think Jay really wants to build out, so we have the existing offices. And then right outside the offices, there's another area that would, you know, work well as like, kind of like a small personnel area. So everybody's wall lockers and stuff like that. So we are talking about framing off an additional little section in there, just to keep it so it's not as, as dusty, you know, and doesn't get all the salt in it that it would get in from the shop. But that's a relatively trivial, that's just a little bit of framing and, and, you know, I mean, the big ticket items for Public Works that we really ought to consider at some point are the fact that the generator in that building was manufactured the same year I was born. And it still works, but you know, it is a fifty-two-year-old diesel generator. You know, that's definitely has some issues, and the power coming off of it is far from perfect. In fact, we can't run, we have to run the pumps in manual mode when we're on the generator, because the, the computer can't handle the, basically the dirty power coming off the generator. So I think that's something we ought to look at long-term. And then we really do need to get a mason in there to, to investigate some of the repointing for the exterior brickwork for that building. So both of those things will have to be addressed at some point. And a couple of the smaller roofs have problems too, both the cold storage areas. You know, those roofs are, you know, we, we did the really large main roof, but we have a couple of the smaller roofs that need to be addressed at some point. So I mean, I, I think over the next five years, we're going to continue to, to put money into that building to, to modernize it. You know, and I think, you know, realistically, we could never afford to build a building of that size to replace its capabilities. So until such time as the DEP, you know, sends us all to jail for, you know, having a stallstead in the floodplain or something of that nature, I would say we're going to continue to use it there.
As far as the generator goes, are there any state programs or state grants or federal grants that we could get for that building to sit there and try to replace that generator?
I mean, I looked at that a while back to see whether any of the Homeland Security Department of Emergency Management ones would cover that. And at the time, I didn't really see one that was applicable to that. But it's something I've kept in the back of my mind. One of these days, we're going to find a grant, you know, for that, because that is critical infrastructure for the town. You know, because obviously Public Works is a major part of your emergency response.
Are there any groups Eric, that we should invite to our next meeting so that we actually have budget presentations? Is there anything that, that you or Sherry want us to have come before the board and present?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I think you have the documentation, the, the budget you're looking at pretty much makes in the department's requests. So if you're okay with what's in the actual budget, then I don't think you necessarily need to talk to the individual departments. If you're talking about trimming things out of the budget, then you, you know, it might be worth, if there's areas of the budget that you think you want to trim, then it would make sense to bring those budget heads in to, to discuss. You've already had the discussion regarding land use with Jed Larson. So I don't know what other information you want regarding that. So, yeah. Does that answer your question?
It does. Sherry, in this spreadsheet, are there any totals as to the, 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 you know, we have our approved budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and then you have department requests, but do we have the total department requests totaled anywhere, so that we can see the, the, where it stands right now with the increase in expected expenses?
On the beginning of the spreadsheet is the department totals. Categorized by the account numbers, if you follow down.
Okay, so right now
That's where they, they stand in each, like, for instance, let's see, example Example, uh, one twenty-one elections, you know, there's a total on there.
That's a, I was, I was, I wanted to look in row sixty-nine, so the total town budget as presented. Is about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars greater than what we had approved last year?
Correct, with the changes, with the stuff you added in the last couple of budget meetings, yes.
Right.
Um, and if you wanna look at, uh, and it's, it's broken out for both the general budget and then. General budget minus capital funds, which you can think of as the operating budget. So you can see those are, you know, roughly equal amounts. There's an increase to the capital funding and an increase to the general budget. Um, and then if you click through to the revenue tab. You could look and see how that propagates and how that, you know, works out to an actual, you know, what effect that has on the mill rate. Given the proposed budget for AES and the proposed budget for RAM.
Alright, those are things we all are gonna have to sit there and work toward and determine what our. Our number can truly be.
I know one question that you did have, um, and was brought up at the last meeting was about the cyber insurance. Do we as a town have cyber insurance with Karma?
We do not.
Okay.
We are running completely. We're running completely blind at this point.
Okay. Alright, that was the question that came up. We weren't sure and I wasn't sure, so. I did call um, Carol. Um, with Karma and she hasn't got back to me yet, but I just wanted to make sure that. Um, I asked that question of you because I know you were working on that.
Yeah. So the last quote we had for standalone cyber policy, I think was around thirty-two thousand a year. Um, something in that uh, neighborhood. Um, I have not, we have not revisited that this year.
And the school, they have ransomware. Um, currently right now, so just to give you an update about that.
What's the cost on that?
Six hundred dollars.
Well, at that price, we, probably something we should look at.
Um, yeah, cuz. That was um, given to me um, by the superintendent, so I could do some more research if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, part of the reason that, I mean, Karma dropped it because their claims. You know, went up like four thousand percent over two years. Um, and the total number of the dollar value of claims far exceeded how much Karma was paying for their policies. So, you know, the carriers have basically all dropped. You know, they're not willing to, to give Karma an overall policy. Um, they will write them town by town, but you know, they're. You know, in what I heard was they went up a lot this year from last year. Um, because the, the actual claims are still going up pretty dramatically.
Okay.
And I think East Hampton right now, I know has been struggling with that. They lost a whole tribe of data. Um, and they've been really struggling for like three months to try to get their systems all back up. So.
Thank you. I'll look into uh, the ransomware.
One of the things Sherry, I think we really should do in the next three or four months and I had. I had posted it to our IT guys. And said, this is one of the things that I wanna work on and then the next increment. Is both the town and the school have onsite data storage backup systems. Um, but because they're connected by fiber between the two buildings. There's no reason, like, we have essentially triply redundant uh, data storage, as does the school. But there's nothing that says we can't put our third. Copy essentially at the school in your server rack and you put your third copy in the town's rack. And then, you know, because if an airplane hits the town hall, you know, what's the likelihood it hits the school too? You know, so at least you physically separate the, the final backup. And that's something that I think we ought to try to get both our IT groups working on. Um, cuz it doesn't sound like it's a hard problem. They just both have to, you know, agree to do it.
Right. Okay, I can do that.
Alright, um. Since we probably won't go on to any real detail in any of the other sections without our other members, um. Jeff, do you have anything that you wanna bring up? Scott, anything that you wanna bring up? Okay, um, do either one of you mind if we move on to uh, public speak? Or is there anything else that we need to deal with? Okay, correspondence, there isn't, there isn't any. Uh, item six, public speak, Diane. Since you turned your camera on, I'm going with you first.
I'm all set, thanks.
Alright, sorry about that. Uh, Marcy Vider.
Hi, the only question I have is the, um, I was wondering about the, the software that. And I know that Sherry's been working on, are we able to get, you know, um, the budget all laid out? You know, like a lot of places have the amounts that were spent to date. And uh, you know, so that's easily seen and like most budget places have that pretty easily. I don't know, I'm explaining myself very well, but.
No, what, what you're asking for is if, if the internal uh, accounting system is. Being used a hundred percent for that issue and I would believe Sherry, the answer is no right now. We're moving that data over to Excel. Unless Sherry tells me that it can be done with this.
Well, it, it, you can have custom reports. That you generate and it tells you year-to-date totals on a monthly basis. As well as monthly totals. And then if you want further columns or further analysis, you can kick it into Excel. And elaborate on that uh, data. You know, some of us want it kicked into Excel so we can. You know, have like a note section or something like that and make individual notes per month. At meetings and whatnot, we can do that. Um. But is it running um, monthly reports and? We are able to rely upon them? Yes, we are.
I just wanna be, are you gonna be posting them online so we can?
The reports themselves, yes.
So Marcy, I could answer that. Typically, what the town does is. As soon as, so the, the, the budget that gets presented to the Board of Finance. Is really the Board of Selectmen's budget. Um, and it's considered a preliminary document, so we usually don't share the whole Excel spreadsheet up until that point. Um, but that point is only about two weeks away. Or three weeks away when that gets shared with Board of Finance. And at that point, that's a public document. You'll have access to the whole Excel spreadsheet, which shows all the revenues, expenses to date. Um, you know, and what the, what the proposed budget is from the Board of Selectmen. As well as a budget book, which offers more explanation.
And I was answering for the school side and that our budget will be given to the Board of Education on Wednesday night. In detail and um, it'll be talked about and discussed. There will be reports. And a budget um, book of all the, the work that we have put into it. Compensating the six on the five um, budget workshops. So there'll be a lot of detail there. As well.
Uh, Joanne Eber?
Um, I'm, I'm pretty good. I just wanted to double check. I apologize. I joined a couple of minutes later. Than the seven o'clock start time. So it's a lot of discussion table till next week because members couldn't make it, right? Is that what I'm seeing? That makes sense. Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay. Alright. Um. I don't think we have anybody else. Amanda, would you like to say anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright. Uh, I think we're good, Sherry. Um, thank you for joining us. Eric, it was uh, very good to see you.
Welcome. It was great to see you, Eric.
Glad to be seen.
Glad you're on the camera, glad you're, you're looking okay.
Yeah.
I, I must comment that, you know, you even put your Tony Handover shirt on. I'm pretty impressed.
Of course.
It's the only shirt he's wearing, Jeff.
Yep, so.
Um, what have you guys wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Jeff, there you go. Alright, all those in favor. I, alright, Eric, thank you for joining us.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.